Good morning, everyone. This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation which will be given today by Reverend Johnny Fitz, who is the Minister of Intercessory Prayer at Mount Olive African Methodist Episcopal Zion Church, which is on Bella Street in Pritchard. And then, following that, please remain standing for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
Good morning. Would you please bow as I pray? Heavenly Father, I come before you with a humble and grateful heart this morning. I ask you, Lord, to lift up those that are seated in places of authority in our nation. Help us, Lord, to recognize that as your children, it is our responsibility to intercede for our government officials. Right now, Lord, I ask that you bless Commissioner Hudson, Commissioner Ludgood, and Commissioner Doitt. Lord, I pray that these commissioners will submit themselves to you, as you are the ultimate authority in each of our lives. Bless them with humility, so that they may walk in and exercise the wisdom that comes from you. Let them use that wisdom, Lord, to best represent everyone. Give them courage, Lord, so that even when the decisions are hard, they can boldly represent their constituents and their needs. Help them to approach every relationship with kindness and an attitude of openness. Guide their conversations with Christ-like love, and help them to show that love to those they interact with on a daily basis. Give them peace with the decisions that they must make. Bless and strengthen their families, Lord. Help their loved ones to understand the awesome responsibilities that these commissioners face, and strengthen them to be supportive and to remain encouraging. Bless the staff that serves these leaders, Lord. Thank you for the ways that you have gifted them to be supportive. Show these men and women your love, your grace, and your strength. Keep them encouraged. Lord, I thank you for this opportunity to lift up and to praise your holy name. For it is in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) We appreciate you being here today. Okay, this morning, we have two special presentations to members of our own county family. First of all, I'd like to call up Danielle Wilkie, who is the Secretary Two with County Administration. She will be receiving a certificate from the Association of County Commissions of Alabama.
First of all, good morning, Danielle. We are very proud of you. This took extra effort on your part and extra training, and we appreciate all the time and effort that you put into it, and it certainly shows a level of professionalism. And today, we are presenting you on behalf of the Association of County Commissions of Alabama, from the County Government Education Institute, which is administered by the local government Training Institute, and with the Association of County Commissions of Alabama, your certificate in county administration. And we're presenting it this on the 25th day. It was presented, you were presented it on the 25th day of August, but we're just now giving it to you. And it is signed by Sonny Brassfield, who is Executive Director of ACCA, and Patricia Ivy, the ALGTI Board Chairman, and also Stephanie Brown, who is President of Association of County Administrators of Alabama. So, congratulations. Thank you for your efforts, and we're very proud. Let's give her a round of applause. Also, we have Donna Jones. Donna, if you will come forward. Don't look surprised, Donna. This may be a surprise. It is a surprise! No wonder she looks surprised. And, okay, well, very good. We love surprises. And Donna, as you may or may not know, is our Director of Human Resources, and this is also presented on behalf of the Association of County Commissions of Alabama. And the Association, as well as your county family, would like to thank you for your dedicated service and outstanding leadership on the ACCA Workers' Compensation and Self-Insurers' Fund Board of Trustees. And this is presented to you on their behalf, and we are so grateful for all of your efforts. And I know you'll be... What is your date of retirement?
November 1st.
November 1st. So, anyway, you have done an outstanding job, and your services to the citizens of Mobile County and to county administration is much appreciated, and that's a small token on behalf of ACCA. Did you want to say a word or two, or am I catching you completely off guard?
Completely off guard.
Well, anyway, you know how much we appreciate you, and we love you. So, keep up the good work, at least until November 1st, and then we'll be sorry to see you leaving us.
Well, thank you.
Let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
Here she is. In recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we have Toni Ann Comanis Torrens, I'll get that right, and her staff. Do you have members of your staff with you today? We are so pleased to have you here. And for those of you who may not realize, Toni Ann is part of a legacy. Her mother, Catherine Comanis, actually founded Penelope House in 1979, and they have been doing a tremendous job and dedicated work in helping to serve and protect and support people who have been victims of domestic violence for all these years. So, in recognition of the Awareness Month, we want to, we have a resolution that we'd like to read to you. It reads, "Whereas, once a secret kept in families, domestic violence is now recognized as a serious crime, one that has served consequences for survivors, their children, their employers, and the community. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers, and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas Penelope House sheltered nearly 500 victims of domestic violence and their children in 2021 while maintaining COVID protocols. And whereas stopping the cycle of this vicious crime requires not only the resolve and courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement of all of us. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission does hereby proclaim October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Mobile County, and commends the efforts of Penelope House. We further urge all residents to educate themselves about domestic violence and work toward improving victim safety in holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individuals, victims, and our society." And if you would, could I get you to introduce your staff members?
Yes, ma'am, I will. You know, so October, we do domestic violence awareness year-round, and a lot of times when people think of Penelope House, they think of our emergency shelter. And Farin Prior is our shelter supervisor, and there is so much that goes on within the shelter, and case management, domestic violence counseling, crisis counseling, connecting to resources. There's many things that we do. But a lot of times, people maybe might be more aware in this setting of our involvement within the court setting, helping victims to navigate the court systems, protection from abuse orders, you know, working with law enforcement, what have you. And Wakanda Williams has been with us over 20 years, based in Government Plaza, and helping those victims navigate the system. So, thank you for the recognition. Truly, we all need to educate ourselves, and one simple way to educate yourself is we have a domestic violence awareness display in the lobby. If you'll stop by and take a look at that, I think it is kind of eye-opening. It's created mostly from clients in shelter and their children, and sometimes children's pictures are so powerful in how we need to make things much better and our society less violent. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we have three people signed up to address the commission this morning. The first is Major Bernard Holt with North Mobile County Soccer Club, and he and a couple of special guests have a thank you for Commissioner Ludgood.
Okay, very good. Welcome. If you would, give us your name again and your address for the record, please.
My name is Major Bernard Holt. I live at 7400 Smithfield Road in Mobile, Alabama. I'm here representing the three kids that belong to the North Mobile County Soccer Club, and we're here to give thanks to Mrs. Ludgood, who we consider our godmother and team mom for our program. And I have some, two little helpers coming up here, and they got some cards that made all the kids sign up there in Creola. And just to let everybody know, some 15 years ago, when we were first getting our program started, okay, I had Ms. Ludgood come up there, and she saw the enthusiasm, the energy of all the kids, and she said, "What do you need?" And at that time, we needed an irrigation system, and she gave us the funding to go ahead and do that, and we've got it, and we've got fields. And we've been able to grow our program, to establish programs also in Citronell, Saraland, and we have a new program in Chickasaw, Alabama. And the program has grown from about 88 kids to now well over 450 to 500 kids that are playing soccer in that area. And the kids start off at the ages of four, and they go all the way up to 13 years old. So, these young girls right here, they'll be playing soccer on our fields for a good long time. And Ms. Ludgood has helped us now to go ahead and get some lights for the field, so we're not bound by the daylight savings time restrictions that we've got now, and so we'll be able to grow our program a little bit more. And we owe this all to Mrs. Ludgood for helping us out and giving us a good start on the program. We have a little pocket of soccer excellence there in Creola, and we take kids from all over, from all the way from North Mobile to county, throughout the whole area. That's why we call ourselves the North Mobile County Soccer Club. Ms. Ludgood, on behalf of all those kids, thank you so much.
We have two more speakers this morning. The next one is Mr. Walter Brown. He's here to address the commission on item number four, the property at Ship 11854 Old Shipyard Road in Theodore, Alabama. And he's been asked to state his name, address, and five-minute time.
Okay.
Is this calm? Is this ergo? Commissioner, just for the benefit of Mr. Brown, I will say that we've got notice from Tom Waters this morning that the gentleman has cleaned up his property, the satisfaction of Tom Waters, and the county attorney is going to ask this matter to be withdrawn. I didn't want to interrupt your presentation, but I think that's...
Yeah, I was just making sure that the case is being closed and that further action is being...
If you would speak into the microphone, please.
Can you hear me now? I can't really hear a difference.
Go ahead, speak up, please.
I was just wondering if this matter is being closed out, or y'all require further action.
We're going to ask it to be withdrawn because he is in compliance.
Okay, you are now in compliance, so the matter will be withdrawn.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tom Waters.
And our third and final speaker today is Mr. Thomas Holmes, representing the ARC of Mobile County. And again, he's been asked to state his name, address, and the price of the five-minute time limit.
Good morning.
My name is Thomas Holmes. I reside at 2117 Charringwood Drive, West Mobile, in Commissioner Hudson's district. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. I am the Board President for the ARC of Mobile County. That's different than what you may have heard before. We are a membership-based 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization advocating for the needs of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Mobile. I'm also a former board member of the Mobile Association for Retarded Citizens, M.A.R.C. I'm here today to advocate for the 230 individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities who lost their community services in March 2020. These 230 individuals and their families received community services from the former M.A.R.C. before its merger, which you approved in July 2019 with AltaPointe Health Systems. In March 2020, AltaPointe canceled these services for all but 77 individuals. The remaining 153 individuals were sent home to be cared for by a parent, a sibling, or other family member until the services were resumed. Many of these caregivers were forced to give up their employment and therefore the income to the family. AltaPointe has stated that the 153 individuals lost their service due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the changeover to new federal requirements. I found that most community service providers throughout Alabama resumed their community services beginning in spring and summer of 2021, not AltaPointe. In December 2021, AltaPointe notified our families that the community services would be discontinued altogether, and AltaPointe would be providing only residential services after January 1, 2022. Community services for the 77 individuals were transitioned to Volunteers of America Southeast in February 2022. According to its 2018 financial statements, which is the latest year I have documents, M.A.R.C. received $80,705 from the county, another $98,193 from the county cigarette packs, a total of $178,898. To my knowledge, that money has not been spent on intellectual and developmental disability services. In addition, there's special education funds in the state budgets in 2018 of $125,326, which are allocated to ARC and ARC-type agencies. AltaPointe is not qualified as either one, so it has not received those monies. So, that money has gone unused. Over the years, the Mobile County Commission has partnered with M.A.R.C. to provide funds for I.D.D. services. I invite you today to renew this community partnership with the ARC of Mobile County. We are committed to rebuilding the former M.A.R.C., and we'll be presenting plans for new community services for these individuals too. We're committed to being transparent and accountable for any and all public funds provided. We're also committed to reporting back to this commission on a regular basis the services being delivered and the number of individuals being served. Thank you for your consideration. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. I think that we are not intimately familiar with some of the information you're bringing forward to us today. I'll be happy to ask our county administration to look into some of the issues you've described about services provided and how that's being funded and so forth, and get back with the commission on that. I know that we certainly don't have control over the State Department of Mental Health and some of the requirements that they've put out as far as home-based services or community-based services for that matter. So, there's a lot there we don't really know, but we can certainly look into it and find out what we need to know as far as our support for mental health services in the community.
Well, don't confuse mental health services with services for our individuals.
Well, I speak of that as an umbrella for...
So, if you give money to AltaPointe for mental health, it does not go to serve our people.
Right, but AltaPointe is, the Mobile Association for Retarded Citizens moved under the auspices of AltaPointe, so...
Unfortunately, yes.
And my understanding was that was a request from M.A.R.C. that that happened. So, there's a lot there that I think probably needs to be, you know, investigated and brought back to our attention so that we understand the full scope of what you're describing to us, and also what the situation is perhaps with M.A.R.C. and AltaPointe as well. So, I think to get a better understanding, that's what we'll ask administration to look into that and report back to us. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. You mentioned, sir, Mr. Holmes, I have a question. You mentioned several sources that have allocated funds to ARC and said that it's not been received by AltaPointe. Where is that money?
I have no idea if they've been received or not, whether the county gave those monies to AltaPointe after the merger. But if they had, then where has the money gone since the services were cut off in March 2020? Thank you.
Well, I'm...
And now, they have divested themselves of everything but the residential homes, which they acquired in the merger. You need to know that when the merger occurred, part of the merger, and I'm the only one that voted against it because it did not involve, include the families, they got all of the assets, all of the real property, all of the personal property that belonged to M.A.R.C., which had been acquired since 1956. And so, they still operate in the group homes. To my knowledge, that's all they're doing with any money that you or the city or the United Way may have provided to them. But their monies, the key thing I wanted to get across was that their monies that were given to M.A.R.C. that are not now being used in the Mobile community to serve these families.
Well, I do know that these funds are subject to annual audits, and so I think that we can certainly look at that and see how the money is being spent and make sure that it is spent appropriately as the commission intends. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I have one question. Are you, so are you telling us today that what you and your organization are planning to do is to set up a new structure to try to serve those people, those 230 who lost services during the merger?
Well, since we're the only ARC in Mobile County, and we organized after the merger because they lost the use of the name, and we're the only organization in Mobile County that's eligible for this special education money, which is appropriated every year. And last year, it was $156,000 that went unused because there's no M.A.R.C., and AltaPointe is not eligible to receive those monies. So, we formed as an advocacy-only group, and we're now forced to build a structure that would deliver services, and that's what we intend to do over the next few months, and we will keep you posted about how that development goes.
Thank you. Does the administration have any questions, or...
We'll get with him. We'll talk to him at AltaPointe.
Okay, thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak this morning?
Okay. All right. Glenn?
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 26, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve contract with Results Performance Consulting, Inc. for training in how to manage employee relations and conduct document internal investigation utilizing the human resources, security, case management software at a cost of $16,550 plus travel expense of approximately $1,500. Additional consulting, if necessary, would be $275 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, approve a finding whether or not the building of structure located at 11854 Old Shipyard Road, Theodore, Alabama constitutes a public nuisance. Legal owner has not responded to county's commission's request to remove debris by September 26, 2022.
That one has been removed, withdrawn.
Number five, approve amending annual appropriation contract with Assuma Public Library to increase contract amount from $45,000 to $60,000 for a total additional amount of $15,000 for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve amending annual appropriation contract with Ina Pullen Smallwood Memorial Library, also known as Chickasaw Public Library, to increase contract amount from $50,000 to $65,000 for a total additional amount of $15,000 for operational expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve professional services contract with MPAC Public Affairs Consulting in amount of $13,608 from District One funds for facilitating and administrating the Mobile County Community Remembrance Project.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve sponsorship agreement with Roll Alpha Chapter of Omega Psi V Paternity, Inc. in the amount of $1,000 from District One funds for its Achievement Week Awards banquet.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve sponsorship agreement with the Child Advocacy Center in a total amount of $2,500 to be divided as follows for its Serve It Up with Love Tennis Tournament.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve appropriation contract with Bell and Graff Gardens and Home Foundation, Inc. in a total amount of $5,000 to be divided as follows for the Del Sham Spoon Porcelain Gallery and Bell and Graff Chapel Facility Restoration Challenge.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve sponsorship agreement with Fostering Together Gulf Coast in the amount of $1,000 from District Two funds for its Fostering Hope Celebration fundraiser.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve a sponsorship agreement for Rappa Hope Children's Retreat Foundation in amount of $750 from District Two funds for its Turkey Trot for Hope event.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve appropriation contract with Cottage Hill Athletic Association in amount of $5,000 from District Two funds to purchase youth football helmets.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, adopt a resolution expressing support for the adoption of amendments two and seven on November 8, 2022 election ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, accept a grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $1,688,670, but no local match, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute all documents associated with this award. Excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, accept a grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Number sixteen, accept a grant award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the home program in the amount of six hundred and seventy nine thousand, three forty one with a twenty five percent in kind or cash match, and authorize the president of the commission to execute all documents associated with this award.
So moved.
Second.
Number seventeen, award bid to James B. Donahue, Inc. for Mobile Metro Jail Smoke Purge Ventilation Systems Upgrade for a total bid in the amount of four hundred and twenty nine thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Number eighteen, approve change order number one with A D C O Companies, L T D, for Government Plaza South Tower Boiler Repair to decrease contract by two thousand, five forty. New contract will be fifty six thousand, eight thirty nine.
So moved.
Second.
Number nineteen, authorize assignment of Matt McDonald to Levert Building Wall Repairs for the proposed fee of thirteen thousand. Work will consist of the design, bidding, and project administration associated with the wall repairs.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty, accept Alabama Department of Youth Services Grant Subsidy Agreement for fiscal year twenty twenty two through twenty twenty three in the amount of one hundred and ninety three thousand, two, three, four.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty one, approve appropriation contract with United Way of Southwest Alabama, Inc. in the amount of ten thousand from District One funds for its Engaging the Next Generation Event.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty two, approve change order number two with Huges Plumbing and Utility Contractors for Project African Town Heritage Challenge to decrease the contract by forty six thousand, nine hun- nine oh eight, ninety six. The new contract total will be one million, four hundred and eight thousand, five ninety one, oh, four.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty three, authorize advertising for requests for proposals for development of multi-unit rental housing in conjunction with low-income tax credit and home funds.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty four, consider taking the following action on bids.
I have a question about the fi- the last, uh, item on the bid list for the Corona, I mean, the COVID nineteen virus level one. I think it's thirty five cents per square foot, which is a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Who, Tyler, do you know what that's about? Or does, who, does anyone know who submitted this?
Yes, sir. Um, I believe this is approving, um, the continued cleaning or sanitization of the offices if someone tests positive. Uh, it's something we've been doing since, um, since the original outbreak. I believe this is, uh, purchasing just approving.
This says for, um...
Polling locations.
Yes, polling locations.
My bad. Yeah, yes, sir. It's, it's the same thing. Um, well, I believe last year, year before, um, they sanitized the polling locations, um, after the, um, after the day was over, before and after.
So is it really, I, I mean, I guess my question is, is it really a necessity at this point in time? With, um, the numbers down, I think we're not really under a whole lot of, uh, COVID protocols anymore. I mean, it's a, almost two hundred thousand dollars for one-time cleaning. I, I'm, I'm just asking if it's necessary.
Uh, my opinion is no.
Okay.
Well, some of the polling places have, as a condition for us being able to use them, they've asked that we do that because then they have to bring their people and their services back in. And this was our way of enticing them. And some of them, we, we have some polling places who just quit doing it because of concerns. And so this was a way, I think, that, um, we were trying to reassure them that we were not going to play their, uh, core business, church or whatever it is, at risk.
Commissioner, that's correct.
I understand that, and, you know, during the height of the pandemic, but I don't, I don't believe we're in the height of a pandemic anymore. And I think spending a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars for one-time cleaning is an unnecessary expense. I would, I would ask that that be removed from the bid list.
I think that, and, and if there are polling precincts, churches, or schools, or whatever that, uh, that are adamant about that, and that's a, a requirement in order to be able to use them as a polling site, that it, then we would, we would do it. Otherwise, I don't think it's necessary either at this point.
Is it something, is, could we take that item off of the bid list and maybe readdress it at a later date instead of approving the, uh, bid right now?
Well, the problem we have, we have identified our polling places. So this means that our team is going to have to go back to each one of these polling places and say, the agreement we signed with you saying we were going to do this, we cannot now do this where you remain a polling place. And if they say no, then we got to scramble, find another polling place, send out notices to all the voters in that polling place that their location is being changed because the current, because the one that we identified some time ago says, because we changed the rules that no, they aren't going to, they aren't going to be a polling place, which creates a whole set of, um, issues less than a month away from a major election.
Was this in the agreement? Was this given to them as a condition that we would do this?
Commissioner, we'll, um, confirm that, but it was each polling site required, some polling sites did require that we do clean, not all of them.
When was that, when did?
That was done back when COVID was...
I mean, yeah, I, I mean, and I get it.
But, I mean, it was done this year also.
Two years ago, but I don't even know why that, can we, can we remove that and put it on a... Can we remove that from the bid list and put it as a, a separate agenda item? Uh, maybe on the ne- at the next meeting? Because I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to vote no on the entire bid list, but I'm not, I'm not in support of that item.
That wouldn't create any issues, would it? Uh, it, in terms of being time-sensitive, if we just put it on that particular one item on the next agenda.
Uh, um, I would say let's put it on the com- for the conference because we need to get this completed as soon as possible.
I would be fine with that. But I think in the meantime, uh, if there's any way to reduce the, if, if it, check and see if it was part of the agreement with these polling locations. If it was, then, then I think we're probably, we need to move forward with it as is and in the future address it. But if not, if there are those that, that it's not required, then I think that that should, then we should remove those.
Didn't we do this in May?
Yes, ma'am.
We did the same protocol for May.
Well, I think COVID, I, I would say that back in May, that, uh, there was a, uh, still a large, uh, percentage of people, you know, getting the COVID virus. You know, I, I think as things change, we, we have to change. We can't just continue to do level one cleaning at polling sites from now to eternity.
Well, I'm not talking about now to eternity. I'm just talking about the scramble. Even if we wait till the last meeting, we're going to be within a week of an election where we're going to be scrambling for polling places. And when you start changing polling places, that's not an easy thing to do. And I just, we, we haven't enough issues around elections already without creating one two weeks out.
Well, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm not really trying to make this an election issue. It really, it never really dawned on me that way, but I'm just, uh, thinking of the expense of cleaning for, uh, a pandemic when we no longer have a pandemic. And that's really my concern, is almost two hundred thousand dollars for a one-time cleaning of some polling locations.
And my concern isn't just meeting the obligations. Whatever we, uh, 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 are obliged to do based on what we agreed to do is what we should do. If we did not agree to do it, and there are those who are not requiring it, then that would be different. So can, if, is there an issue with holding this one out?
Yeah. Commissioner, if we can vote on it with the stipulation of... Yeah, and we can, and make an inquiry about those that want it and those that don't want it. As it, there is also a stipulation that you have to have your voting sites so many days out, uh...
Why don't we do, why don't we do that, have, why don't we vote on it? And, um, see if we can't, uh, get whoever's, I'm assuming this come from the probate courts or from... So why don't we do that, vote on it, and then see if we can reduce maybe the, uh, number of square feet, uh, by locations who would not require this? How about that? Can we do that? And then we could readdress it at...
So we'll go ahead and approve it and then work on trying to reduce the, uh, amount of cleaning required.
Sorry, I just, I just wasn't comfortable with that price for one-time cleaning. I mean, we, we have contracts with people who clean offices around here for way less than that, and they do it for the entire year for way less than that.
And I think it would be helpful, as opposed to thirty five cent a square foot, if we knew what the total amount is. You know, if you, that could also be included.
I think it's a hundred and seventy seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty eight.
I'm just saying, in, in the information provided.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, number twenty five, approve annual service agreement with B I S Consulting, LLC in the amount of fifteen thousand for tax payment system services, web hosting services, and G I S Interactive Map Services for the Revenue Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty six, approve maintenance agreement with Central Time Clock, Inc. in amount of hundred and forty nine dollars for Rapid Print A R dash E Time Clock for the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty seven, approve purchase of GPS tracking units, licensed hardware, and accessories for Samsera, Inc., license for thirty-six month term from current purchasing cooperative, Sourcewell. Contract in the amount of fifty five thousand, four seventy for years two and three for the Public Works Department. Amount fifty four thousand, seven fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty eight, approve correction in September twelfth, twenty twenty two minutes, agenda item number ten. The item should have read as follows. Award bid number seventy three dash twenty two, annual trash remover bid for county locations to Waste Management, Echo South Services, B F I Waste Services, Waste Pro USA, Inc. The correction is due to the merger of G F L Environmental and Echo South Services on September first, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty nine was voted at the conference. Thirty was voted at the conference. Thirty one, approve professional services agreement with Content Fresh, LLC for twelve-month period for Mobile County Social Media Management Infrastructure and Content not to exceed fifty four thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty two, authorize grant agreement with Mobile Area Lodging Corporation in amount of seventy five thousand to support African Town Heritage House Project.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty three, approve contract with Hispanic American Business Association of the Gulf Coast in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand from District One funds to acquire or refurbish a commissary kitchen facility.
So moved.
Second.
Number thirty, adopt a resolution awarding Soul Source Contract to Pure U V LLC in amount of one hundred and forty four thousand, five forty for the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty five, approve extension of license agreement between Mobile County Commission and the Plains Pipeline, L P, formerly Plains South Cap LLC, regarding the work to be performed within the county. Rights-of-way listed within the license agreement noted license agreement is for the underground installation operation and maintenance of a twenty-four, um, inch steel pipe crude oil pipeline.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty six, reject bid for project safety improvements on Celeste Road. Only one bid was received and it exceeded available budget.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty seven, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track thirteen in the amount of one thousand, five hundred for project. John Paul Road and Anches Trace Road, gray, drained, bathed, and paved.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty eight, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Tracks nine, ten, and eleven in the amount of forty one thousand, two seventy-two for project Dolls Road Widening, Resurfacing, and Striping.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty nine, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty, authorize ascending to the county engineer's approval of an extension of the approval for the preliminary plat for one year from the previous date of approval. Rossfield Phase One.
So moved.
Second.
Forty one, approve hold harmless indemnity agreement fiscal year twenty twenty two through twenty twenty three for the use of county equipment from the following city of Chickasaw.
So moved.
Second.
Forty two, approve preliminary and final plat of Dewitt's Place and preliminary and final plat resubdivision of portion of Lot Three as subdivision, resubdivision of Lots One and Three, and preliminary and final plat a resubdivision of Lot Three, Wright Farms Estate.
So moved.
Second.
Forty three, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Five in amount of three thousand for project Holly Point Drive, South, Shettville Road, and Wilson Road, gray, drained, bathed, and paved.
So moved.
Second.
Forty four, approve Public Works Department to construct a parking lot for the new Tanner Williams Volunteer Fire Department. The estimated cost of this proposed work is approximately six thousand, seventy, oh, four, of which the cost of the materials, two thousand, eight, fifteen, forty, will be charged to project G F P one-ten.
So moved.
Second.
And we have one add-on. Number forty five, approve amending annual appropriation contract, E F P dash two oh five dash twenty-three with the Explorer Center, Inc. doing business as Explorium Science Center to increase contract amount from sixty thousand to seventy five thousand for a total additional amount of fifteen thousand for its senior design Imagineer for the, for Topia Exhibition.
So moved.
Second.
And forty six, commission announcements and/or comments.
Commissioner, do it. Uh, we have an executive session today immediately following the meeting, so do we need to?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Ask the county commission, considering executive session, to talk about three matters of economic development and one, uh, threatened lawsuit against the county. I would certify these are appropriate reasons to go executive session under the Alabama Open Meetings Act, and so further certify the same as lawyer license to practice law in Alabama. I'm estimating this meeting takes fifteen or twenty minutes in its total. There'd be no need to come back out of executive session. So if, if the commission wished to, can adjourn from this meeting to executive session and not come back out. No action will be taken.
So is there a motion to go into executive session to recess this meeting and to adjourn from executive session?
I make a motion.
Second.
You have a voice for, a voice?
Yeah, a roll call.
Roll call?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the meeting will be in the all-day purpose room?
Correct. Thank y'all. So this, this meeting stands recessed? Go move.